Thank you for joining in. What do we got, Debbie?
Yes, I do want to wait for Councilman Pierce. Since she's the one that requested this be on the agenda.
You should all stand and clap for her.
Oh, a slow clap.
Yeah. So many doors, which one is she gonna come in? Anybody a Batman?
I'd say the one to the right.
Quickest, easiest for her car. Yay! It's always me. Welcome to the party.
It's our new livestream.
Okay.
It's called layered redundancy. One doesn't work, the other will.
Okay, you ready? I'm just gonna give a very simplified version or definition of what fund balance is, so that everyone in the community would have an opportunity to understand what we're talking about when we're always mentioning fund balance. And one of the commonest conceptions is that fund balance is a cash account, thereby associated or correlates with our government bank account balance. But what it truly is, is the difference between your assets and your liabilities, which is in the public sector will be your equity, and governmental funds, that's called your fund balance. Those numbers are derived from our balance sheet, which I gave you a copy of that as Exhibit 3, so that you could see what the assets were, the liabilities, and how we came to that total fund balance number. And fund balance is really intended to serve as a measure of your financial resources and the availability of your governmental funds. I didn't speak this morning. It indicates the health of an individual fund, and it is essential to keep a high level of fund balance, or as much as you can to mitigate your current risk, future risks, and to ensure that you have a stable tax base. And credit reporting agencies also will look at our financial statements to see where our fund balance is, so that does directly affect our rating status with them. Is the fund balance money available to be spent? Well, maybe, but not always. As you can see from that exhibit I gave you, in your fund balance, you have your restricted, your assigned, and your unassigned. The restricted is things that are legally restricted. That stabilization by state statute is a calculation that our auditors have to do. The state gives them a worksheet, and they make this calculation, and that says how much money has to be reserved that you cannot spend out of your fund balance. The assigned, and that's also your POW bill dollars, and any grant monies are restricted. You can spend, of course, the POW bill money, but that is designated just for specific street repairs. Your assigned are things that you have done internally. So you've assigned funds to a capital project fund, or you have the storm damage prevention fund. Those are things that you've assigned to certain projects, but you can reassign those. So if we needed the storm water, storm damage prevention fund for another purpose, council could decide that you want to reallocate that for something else. Your unassigned basically are the funds that are available for you at the end of the year that could be spent in your budget for the next year. And this is another snapshot of your Exhibit 3. This, you can see all of the funds that were available, and your total fund balance for the year actually was the six million. But the available amount that has not been assigned to anything else or restricted in any method is the three million, three point one million, which is your available fund balance. Yes, sir. So that's when you self-assigned that, so council could decide to reallocate that for something else. Means if you see that, for example, that the government's gonna continue to pay for the beach projects, then maybe you wouldn't want to reassign that to another project that you have. Yes, sir.
Debbie, does the available fund of three point one, does that be almost defined as a fiscal year rollover?
Yes, sir.
And that against the anticipated revenues to the general fund, that divided into, roughly speaking, equates to what is loosely referred to as what's in savings?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would caution you that we would have to add that storm damage. We had some dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So that's where, when you responded back to the letter that came in November, it equated to, closer to a throw number out, for just thirty-one, thirty-two percent.
Correct, because they consider everything to be roughly available to you except for that stabilization by state statute. Because that's the only one that they're totally restricting for you not to be able to spend. So the way we calculate the percentage of fund balance available is you take your fund balance total from Exhibit 3 and divide that by your liabilities, which is on your Exhibit 5, and that gives you a percentage of the available fund balance. Yeah, this was from our last audit. Trying to give you fund balance estimates during the year is a little tricky. I mean, our property tax is our largest revenue generator. And the bulk of that does not come in until the first of the fiscal year, I mean, not the calendar year, as opposed to the fiscal year. Sales and use tax is our second largest, and that also works on a three-month delay. So for the first three months of the fiscal year, those funds are actually money that was recorded as receivables from the prior year. So you're really, at this point, you're dipping into your fund balance or your cash reserves to help pay bills until you start receiving those revenues that you anticipated. So to try to give you that estimate, we use the Budget versus Actual Report, which I also gave you a copy of. So on that, we're taking the beginning, or the fund balance that they said was available, and then I would look at your monthly, I do a, I have a spreadsheet that we plug these numbers in. So I'm looking at that bottom line. So as you can see, for the month-to-date, for July, we finally are coming on the black, getting out of the red. So we had two hundred twenty-five thousand that we had received extra. So we expect that to keep increasing, hopefully, if everything comes in. Our revenues come in as projected, and our expenditures are kind of close to what we expect. This gives me a good estimate of where we are throughout the year. I also include receivables that we know we're gonna get back from grants or things like that, to give you a good, better snapshot of where we may be at the end of the year. So the key takeaways from this is the fund balance is not a separate cash account and does not directly correlate with the town's checking or investment accounts. So I know there was concern about that when there were LGCs that were about fund balance, but that in no way indicated that we did not have cash in the bank to make our bills. That was just strictly looking at those funds that they deemed to be currently available. The fund balance is available to spend. It's money that you have at the end of one year that can be appropriated for financial expenditures in the next year's budget. However, not all of the money needs to be appropriated, only that which is needed to balance the budget. Anything that is left over is what we refer to as your cash reserves.
Great to hear your question. Debbie, regarding any investments we have, are there state statute limitations on what we can, what the town can invest in?
Yeah, they do have some restrictions on investments. They won't let you invest in anything risky. Currently, we're invested in the Capital Management Trust, Long Island Capital Management Trust, which is typical for municipalities our size. So they have a cash account and a term account, and right now, that investment is doing pretty well on the term account side.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great summation.
So, Mr. Mayor, if we start moving into that budget season, we'll be familiar with Debbie's, let's give it five, total revenues for the year-end of June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, that's last year's, right? The total revenue, the revenue is almost thirteen nine, and if you look at the Budget versus Actual Fund, it's here, projected revenue is sixteen. So the question is, Tom, where do we finish off our whole revenue? I know they proposed revenue, three, two, a guy in my opinion. And the other thing we discovered is she had that same percentage of twenty-one percent service. If you add back in the storm damage, it took the closer to thirty, like twenty-nine. But we have historically, council has tried to do fifty percent. And part of the vice that we got caught in was that our revenues and expenses increased over the last number of years, and seventy, eighty dollars each year, one to fourteen. So fifty percent of fourteen is a lot more than fifty percent of nine, right?
Yep.
So we're trying to get us fifty percent of fourteen or sixteen. That's getting to a larger number, and that unrestricted or unassigned fund that's probably something to do with that. Because I don't know if we can get to fifty in a year, so maybe some kind of...
Yeah, baby steps.
And mostly this is for our, my comments I take are just for us to have, especially when we get that budget.
And I know we have talked about some goals as we entered during the town retreat, and that was certainly one of the tier goals, is to increase fund balance. Debbie, the projected incomes, that sixteen, projected sixteen-six, keyword projected, right? Any of that tied to return on investment for the investment vehicles, the low risk? Is that anticipating some, you know, level of return?
Yeah, and that's actually gonna come in higher than projected, because we did, we kind of projected low in our investment earnings. And that's gonna come in higher, because the Fed raising interest rates a little bit more, that's bumped that up some, so we'll actually see a greater return on. It's probably worth two.
So two on four, maybe, not gonna get us on sixteen. The town, historically, we haven't had a lot of, it's an extremely conservative, safe sweep account, which doesn't, it's not a high yield money market fund. Mutual fund is gonna go into all the, all the, about seventy-eight, seventy-two percent. So if you've got four, then a lot of percent.
All interest things account. Nothing, no index funds or anything like that?
Uh, that's it.
Because that could go one of two ways.
Right, right. That's true.
Yeah, put on black. Yeah, that's...
So, really, those revenue increases have come from the other actions that we've taken, and an increase in our assessed value that the county gives us on our property, on the town, you know, residential and commercial property throughout town.
And a lot of the development and the permitting coming back, I never, the opportunity didn't present us to discuss any of the, when the state required all municipalities, or at least those impacted by the storm, to waive permitting fees for a period of time, didn't have a chance to. Wasn't the right time last Wednesday at the dinner to discuss, you know, reimbursements on that fifty, fifty-five thousand.
Yes, sir.
Okay. But that can still be pursued, or at least inquired?
Yeah, I think that there are some other people that are lobbying for that, so...
Everybody, yeah. And of which the accounting was fantastic, timely and really good, so applaud the town manager for that. Anything else with Debbie?
I liked the presentation. If we were able to scale it down just a smidgen bit more and put it onto the website underneath the tab where everyone goes to look at the budgets, I think it'd help our residents understand a little bit better on what they're truly looking at, and that it's not just a big cash account.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Ready to talk about bathrooms?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Ready, go.
Staff has been looking at locations to build a new public bathroom facility. Currently, the facility we have at the boardwalk is limited, and when it was currently built, it couldn't be rebuilt in its current location because of CAMA requirement setbacks without getting a variance through the Coastal Resource Commission. So we're limited on improvements, and we can't expand it. And for the number of visitors that we have coming to the boardwalk and gazebo events and fireworks, it has its challenges. So in two thousand and three, we received a grant for FEMA buyout to buy the property here at one hundred Cape Fear Boulevard in the corner of Canal and Cape Fear. And the lot has remained vacant, as there are some deed restrictions on what you can do with it. When the rides come, we have picnic tables, but other than that, it's really remained, there hasn't really been a plan for this property. So we're looking at putting the bathroom facility on this property, which is an allowable use of the property. Of course, you do have to go through the state and get approval by FEMA before you develop this property. The deed restrictions, it can be used for a public facility that is open on all sides, kind of like a gazebo area, or a public restroom, but the structure would have to be elevated or floodproof. And this is the survey of the property that, when we bought it, it was a one-story block building that we demoed, and we purchased the property then for a hundred and forty thousand.
Jeremy, when you said we purchased the property, we got those FEMA grants. We didn't, the town didn't spend any dollars on that.
We did not. It was all grant funding through FEMA buyout property.
We didn't go out and buy that corner of the lot for a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
It was a... Correct. It was a voluntary program that the owner of the property approached the town saying, "Hey, I would like to participate." There was FEMA funds available for a buyout, and this was all after Fran Berther and Floyd came in mid-late nineties. We purchased the property through FEMA funds. Here is, there's also, the adjacent property is under construction now, building a mixed-use building with a restaurant on the ground floor. Here is the vacant property that the town owns. And so we're looking at building the bathroom...
Wait, on that, on that drawing right there on the left-hand side, where the apparent concrete is, the gap between the concrete and our property line?
Mm-hmm.
Are they actually gonna have that space, or have they gone right up to the property?
They've actually, they're gonna have concrete up to the property line, which is this kind of hashed area. The building itself will not be on the property line, there'll be some distance.
Is the dash line our property line, or is it a setback or some type?
That, it is our property, but in order for them to build, we did authorize a ten-foot restriction on our property, where you would be a setback, where you'd have to have a separation distance for the buildings.
They still come in with some kind of candle lever or encroaching into that ten feet?
Not past their property line, no.
And that's gonna be a ground floor restaurant?
Correct.
And it's gonna have outdoor seating area along that concrete?
They will, yes.
And right with our bathroom?
Well, that's one reason, when we originally went to design...
That's my concern.
Counsel wanted us to push the bathrooms to the northwest corner as much as possible. The slot does have underground utility transmission lines going through it, so that makes it a little bit more challenging. So we were looking at putting two buildings, one men, one women's, and also our operations department wanted a little storage area for supplies. If we elevated it, there would be quite ramping, substantial ramping, about twenty-five thousand worth, to meet ADA requirements for the ratio to sloping.
Is that what all that decking is down, where the back and forth arrows are?
It is, and... If we elevate it, and it would obstruct the, kind of, you know, if you're doing outdoor dining, you would just be staring at a ramp.
And Jeremy, I don't, can you, just with the cursor, show on their concrete pad where the outdoor dining would be? Because if I'm not mistaken, it's not the entire stretch of the building.
Is this the only picture you have?
No, it is not. And I'd...
Yeah, because if I'm not mistaken, the outdoor dining on the concrete pad in front of the building is not the entire stretch of the concrete pad.
Their, the restaurant, well, kind of where their windows ends right here, and then this will be the back, will be the kitchen area.
Yeah, three quarters of the lot, which, yeah.
Jeremy, do you remember what we charged those guys for permitting fees?
I'd have to look back. Ballpark, yes.
And I guess my question is, have you had conversations with the property owner about the bathroom facility going there?
I have not, but I did reach out to their architect to design, to see what, okay, what is this gonna look like? And here's their building, a rendering. Here, you can kind of see their outdoor dining area. We still would have open green space if we did not elevate it and we could floodproof the building. And I asked the architect to have some of the similar architectural features and kind of tie in to where we had the lift station, as shown here. This is the existing lift station, the bathrooms. And then we would have a small outdoor storage area.
Yeah, exactly.
That's something our operations department requested for supplies.
My concern is, we've asked people to invest in our community and build these nice projects, and then we're gonna go stick storage in a bathroom in front of it. I mean, I don't know, what do we need to store? I mean, people are gonna line up by the bathrooms, and usually bathroom areas, look at the one we have, get filthy and nasty and that kind of thing. So that's my concern with people eating just across the grass from it. I can't hear you.
Yeah, and that part I get a little better with understanding. I just, I mean, I hate to give you guys on the storage, but we are making a pretty big impact right there, so you're gonna have to tell me personally on what's, what are we doing in the storage there?
Thanks.
As it stands now, we don't have a really good storage area for our folks to go up there all through the summer. We have some small storage buildings inside of the gated area just north of the lift station right there, like Rubbermaid-type buildings, but we're really at a lack of places to store vacuums, blowers, mechanical brooms that we use for the sand on the boardwalk areas.
Now, those temporary employees that down there that we hired over the summer to clean everything with the crew?
It's both, a combination of both.
What about Brian down in the gazebo area where we built that, enclosed that area? Is there not enough room there for storage of some of your equipment?
Most of those have, are pretty much maxed out with things that are in them, chairs.
And even in the sewer lift station, there's no room for a closet to...
No.
Okay.
So do those employees, they start over here at the operation facility, get their trucks right down there?
They do, what we do to kind of reduce vehicles and whatnot. A lot of them go up there, like, say, an ATV, a gator, or whatnot, so there's not a lot of ability to...
I mean, I, it just seems like we always need more storage. We always have more things to store. I get it, I own a business too, I get it. But can you go back to that picture? If you look at the storage unit and the bathroom, you're talking about a lot of activity right there on that corner, in and out, getting blowers and weed eaters or whatever, and maintenance people in and out of there, and bathroom people in and out of there. I'm just not sure how that's gonna look, and you know as well as I do what that street looks like on a Thursday night.
I like the fact that you guys listened and moved it all the way up.
Not like that.
And it does open that corner up, and that keeps it a little nicer. There are a couple of telephone poles right there. But if you were keeping it away from the corner and the restaurant, I'd get that. How big is that door? Do you keep going to anything that he's...
Well, I was gonna say, if, and I talked to operations about this. There may be some room on the other side of the dumpsters in the lift station, off of Raleigh. We could do make a storage, but...
Is that where you have your Rubbermaid deal right now, Brian?
No.
So what's the size of that store, Darian?
It's not very large, I think it's, I think it's got ten by twelve.
But that's, this is showing the two-story ramp elevated one. Do you have, can you go to the one right below the colored picture one more down?
Yeah, that's just showing kind of a...
So that would be like a single level?
Yeah.
Which is what you're showing. How many stalls are in that bathroom?
And we haven't gone to complete design yet, but, you know, we were looking at... Six, we're trying to get in there.
Six, on male, six female, or six, six what? Six, six sex, whatever they...
Probably, yeah. Probably five, maybe five stalls and a couple of urinals and the men's.
So five on each side, six on each side, that's twelve.
And if you go to single level, are you still separating them like that, right, over the power underground?
Because it's underground, yes, we still would...
And currently, there's two stalls in the existing bathrooms?
Yes, correct.
And we're gonna still remodel those and keep those in operation?
Yes, yeah, so we'll be upgrading the fixtures, painting...
You have two on the other side, or four?
And is there a reason why you didn't push those buildings right up and just put the electric components right between the two of them?
The existing transmission?
Right.
It's existing there, and we...
But is there a reason you can't just push those buildings right all the way back to the gap between them?
Yeah, there's an easement here.
For what? So the power's running the other way?
Yeah, to this property.
What, to the Fork and Court's property, or is it just what? Goes from their property out to Canal, and they have to jump... Goes from their property out to, um, canal, and they have to jump over these transforms?
No, it, it was a, an existing easement, and then there's also, it wasn't an access easement. It was a utility.
Question is physically, is there something that would prevent you from moving those buildings all the way back, because you know, there's a line that runs, where conditions to canal, or that they run parallel to canal?
There's an easement where that transmission box is.
Running out to eight feet?
Correct, but they would access the equipment through canal drop for maintenance.
Are you guys wor- more worried about just what the people at this diner are viewing, that's what it appears to be?
Here's what I'm worried about.
What's the question?
We have asked this particular property owners who've been very cooperative with us, and I don't even know if we've had any conversation with them, to develop and do the best they can do with that property. They own all the rest of the property down there too, so I'd like to see us have some conversations with them about what works for them, so that I don't, I don't wanna hear, you know, we did all this, and then you stuck a nasty bathroom right in front of our, our restaurant, and so, what are you gonna do when we try to make the rest of it better? That's, that's my concern, I don't know if that's your-
Well, my concern is to minimize impact of public facilities like that, especially with that particular issue anyway, and these are pretty tight lines, so when you look at that rendering, it appears to me that that, the bathroom building is set right up on the other structure, right, the lift station, if you look at that?
Yeah.
That's the artist concept, but when you look at the actual plan that they just presented, there's a six or eight foot gap, and when you only have a ninety foot or a hundred foot wide lot, and you just visualize, you're down there on Thursday nights, you see that activity, I think we need the bathroom, um, I understand needing to get a grating there, Mark? I'm just not sure why we need an eight foot separation between the lift station and the bathrooms, and all these, and I, I gotta imagine if we went and talked to that property owner and explained, hey, we could vacate the easement, if we move the building back, eight feet, you know, you're, you're, it's, it's substantial on your own track, and what is that lot? Jeremy, is that a fifty by a hundred? Is it that?
Yeah, the bu- the buildable area.
The FEMA lot that we got, is it fifty by a hundred?
Mm-hmm.
And did we put the lift station on one end of it, or is that-
No, that's a, it's a separate lot.
And you're talking about a thirty foot long building, and you got a third of the lot, I mean, if you could put it right up, so, does this rendering, doesn't it show it right up on the, um, lift station?
No, it, it, there's, it takes into consideration that, that gap, that easement area.
Okay. A- and we have not reached out to the adjacent property owner?
I have not spoken directly to the owner, no.
And wo- wouldn't we typically do that on it, like, when we look at the C and T across the way, uh, next to Domino's, we catch the courage in that private sector group to reach out to the homeowner, like, to the building next door, and, you know, we're starting to hear about land use conflicts with adjacent property owners?
I, I guess for me too, I won't-
They didn't know that-
Carolina Beach, the town of Carolina Beach has to be a good neighbor, just like we ask other people to be a good neighbor.
That the town was looking at, looking at a bathroom for this property, they were aware of that.
And they, I mean, believe me, I've heard from them in the past on other issues, I haven't heard from them on theirs, so I-
Who is it?
Pardon?
Who's Jeremy? Oh, that, those, that's their problem.
They've called on plenty of other issues that they've had when the towns, you know, approached, uh, using their lots for parking and Christmas by the season, and we've done a ton of things for ten years down there, um, they have not said any, I mean, I haven't heard from them, so I'm not sure.
I think it's at least reasonable to show them the rendering and discuss what projected plans the town has, that's, that's not a question.
I mean, they're builders, if they have a better idea, let them tell you what it is, you know?
Yeah, and, and what we were just trying to do is just really just give a pretty picture to council and get direction.
This, this is what-
But like Steve says, this isn't what the plant, the drawing says, this rendering is not the same.
I don't know, Jeremy says he thinks it takes into account the gallop.
Yeah, yeah, eight foot on a picture is not very, it, it will not look very big.
Do you have a rough estimated cost on this?
Uh-
Magic question.
Uh, yeah, probably looking approximately a hundred and twenty thousand, but plus, we'd have to floodproof, which would add to it, um-
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, what?
Hundred and twenty thousand approximately for the building itself, but then you'd have to have the additional floodproofing cost.
So, what's your proposed next step?
Uh, if we get direction from council to move forward, we would go into the design phase, then we would go to, uh, we'd go to bid, and then we would take the council to award the bid, and, uh, we would go through, we'd have to get FEMA and state approval, and then start, uh, construction.
During that design phase, I would recommend, uh, one of two options, the first one is like Steve said, push as far back as possible, and speak to that property owner, see how willing they'd be allowed to let us get into that easement, and the second one is what you currently have here.
And I, and I see what you're saying, on, on this one, by not elevating him, you're able to bring the buildings together, and it's a smaller footprint, you don't have the stairs, so if you have to separate and leave room for that power, uh, I, I, I see that, um, I mean, we need the bathroom.
Yes.
And we have discussed it, it's been a public con- it's been a public conversation for a year, um, before these guys broke ground, I would just ask that we at least get in touch with Ken and Matt, and, um, show them these renderings, and my preference would be to see the single story and floodproof it, because that back and forth with the decking is just, uh, too impactful for what we need to-
Jeremy, is this money already in the budget?
The wood, long-term, just kinda-
Or is this this year's budget?
That, I'd have to refer, I don't know, the operations did that consideration.
So, it's not budgeted, okay, um-
But even by the time we had everything in play, it probably wouldn't kick off until July anyways, correct?
So, I would ask that you have a conversation with Ken and Matt about this project and see what their thoughts are, I wouldn't want them to lose a lease on the restaurant because of something we're building either, you know, so I want them to be aware, I mean, if I was putting a restaurant there, I'd have a concern about it, and I realize that they have that leased out to, well, I don't wanna name, but to another restaurant person.
And I would tell you that Mark's comments are, are quite appropriate.
No, I understand.
That is the largest lift station, we've done a lot to-
No, I understand.
Make it, and it's been, so, um, we gotta keep moving forward.
So, if you'll have those conversations, that, that would make me feel a lot better if, if they were on board-
Yes, ma'am.
With your design.
All right, Jeremy, concur on all, good concerns, good discussion, thank you for the presentation, that's good rendering too. All right, Chief, do you have anything that you need to present regarding the next item, or is this just a proclamation you're looking for, Kim? To be read in the, got it, okay, all right, which I will do, Resolution nineteen dash two-one-nine-nine, a resolution authorizing the retirement of police canines. Whereas the town of Carolina Beach Police is the owner of two canines, known as Knox and Ammo, both names, used for sniffing and trafficking, trafficking, uh, tracking, rather, narcotics, and whereas the chief of police has determined that the dogs are no longer needed for public service, and whereas the town plans to retire the dogs from service, and whereas former Officer Granger Dexter Sauer Jr. and former Officer Stephen Bays, prior to their resignations, had normal custody and control of the dogs during the dog's public service to the unit of local government, and whereas the manager is authorized to dispose of the dogs to Granger Dexter Sauer Jr. and Stephen Bays in accordance with North Carolina general statutes, twenty dash one-eighty-seven, one-sixty A dash two-six-six. And, Chapter Two, Article One, Section Two, Three of the Town Ordinances, now therefore be it resolved by the town account, the town council, the town of Carolina Beach, as follows, the dogs are declared surplus, town manager is authorized to dispose of the dogs, give to Granger Dexter Sauer Jr. and Stephen Bays in accordance with North Carolina general statutes, twenty dash one-eighty-seven, one-sixty A dash two-six-six, and Chapter Two, Article One, Section Two, Three of the Town Ordinances, and to execute such documents of conveyance as may be necessary to transfer ownership of the dogs. The canine Knox shall be conveyed to Granger Dexter Sauer Jr., the canine Ammo shall be conveyed to Stephen Bays, consideration for disposition of the dogs shall be monetary, and shall include the promise by both recipients of the dogs that they shall indemnify and waive release and discharge the town of Carolina Beach from claims or damages in connection with or arising out of the acts of the dogs following their sale to the two recipients, adopted this day twenty-sixth February twenty-nineteen, Mayor Joe Benson attests, Kimberly Ward, Town Clerk. Yes, I make a motion to approve Resolution nineteen dash two-one-nine-nine, a resolution authorizing the retirement of police canines.
Before you do that, can I ask a few questions?
How long did we have the canines in service? And within that timeframe, would now determine that we don't need them anymore? At the beginning of that resolution, it sounded like we do, do not need those dogs anymore?
Uh, typically canines have a service life anywhere between eight to ten years, these dogs are eight now, almost eight, at the spring, um, by the time that we did have new handlers trained to encompass that, we're looking at quite a few months, uh, it's not necessarily training the dog, it may be training the, the handlers, and canines are also known for being very connected to the trainers who have basically become a part of their family.
Well, we'd be looking into replacing them, or are we just gonna phase that out?
At some point, that's, that's a possibility, that wasn't, um, a, a focus we were jumping on tomorrow.
Okay, what's the cost of that, roughly?
Of a canine?
Mm-hmm.
I would have to speculate, but I guess-
Chief, then you'd move forward in the event that we do, or at least as a contingency, to get two officers trained as handlers at some point?
At some point in the future, while with new canines that they're in a, that they're actually raising?
Sure.
Uh, we do have, uh, backup support right now for canines with county if we need it, and also Currie Beach has a fledgling, uh, canine.
So, Chief, i- if, if the life of, of, I don't mean the life, but the expectancy of that is eight years, what do you do when you have a dog in your, um, department that becomes eight years?
It would depend on the dog, some dogs are, are in service for ten years.
So, these dogs are almost out of service anyway, is what you're saying?
That's, that's our recommendation.
So, does the handler get a new dog, or?
In a, a typical situation, a, a handler would get a new dog, and, uh, if they wanted to continue being a dog handler, and that dog would retire and, uh, become a house dog.
So, we were about to be faced with that position?
Yes, ma'am.
And a memorandum of agreement with the town of Car- uh, Currie Beach, rather, to, for their assistance when required.
Yes, we, we already have a, a mutually agreed with them and, and the county.
And they have one?
Right now, yes, ma'am.
Okay, no, that's good, Chief, thanks for that point on the Currie Beach arrangement, any other questions here?
I have none.
Okay, no, no, good, no, with that, uh, I make a motion to adopt Resolution nineteen dash two-one-nine-nine, a resolution authorizing the retirement of police canines, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, any non-agenda items? Look, he's walking away, okay, maybe we can get through this.
Uh, no.
The only thing I have, um, and Ed answered some of the questions for me yesterday, um, and I talked to Brian about some of the Hennecker's ditch issues that, um, go through private property, um, I did meet with a homeowner, and I talked to Brian about that, um, and I'm not sure, um, he's clear on how much work he needs to do, um, if you wanna address that, I just didn't know where we were at, and how many locations does that affect around town?
As far as six-twelve Charlotte goes, um, he, I think he's pretty clear, Joe met, uh, Joe and I met with him last week, and went through, um, the first inspection of it, and he had made progress, he had removed, uh, stumps and some large trees from the ditch, and then we gave him further directions, and said, listen, anything below six inches needs to come out of there, um, and any dead material, things like that, um, and then we, I think we're gonna follow up on March fifth, I do believe that's the date we agreed upon.
And, and that, what I saw was a very large ditch, um, through that property?
Yes, ma'am, it's probably about ten feet or so.
Do we offer, um, if, if a homeowner can't do it themselves, do we offer any, um, relief or co-work with them, or?
Um, no, not as it stands.
If it was my ditch, I wouldn't be up to service.
Yeah, right, as it stands, we follow per our ordinance, and that's, you know, pretty restrictive as far as what we can do on private property without an easement in place, and there's, there's not one over there.
And, and that was my next question, um, I know Joe had brought that up at another meeting, that we talked about getting some easements, um, where are we at, are we still looking at that, or?
We have not, the, the direction we were kinda given was to, you know, advance down the path of, you know, speaking to the homeowner and got, giving him guidance through this.
And citing areas of obvious blockage?
Yes.
Okay, and so, when you determine that this is satisfactory, it's basically gonna be the ability to see a flow of water-
Yes, sir.
In the ditch?
Yes, sir.
So, that's, in, in other words, you know, it's not some arbitrary, it looks good, and at least we can illustrate, this is what is sad, this is what-
Yes, sir, yes, sir, he, he-
This is the standard.
What, what had happened was, uh, during the storm, a big stump had fallen into, um-
I saw that, he cut that out.
Raising the water probably about ten inches in there, so he's got that going, so there's water going, you can go over there now, and it's flowing through good, now we're just trying to get this, the ditch sides maintained, so that this doesn't become an issue in the future.
So, are we gonna create standards for them to go by, because I don't know, do we have that written document somewhere, that anything larger than six inches has to be cut out?
I don't think that is in our ordinance, that's just pretty much a standard, that's the guidance we gave to our contractor working in Hennecker's, the, the bigger portion-
Which is new too, cause we haven't been doing it.
Yes, ma'am.
So, maybe we should have some written standard of what we would expect these homeowners to maintain too?
Sure.
Cause it seems to me like now that ditch has kinda gotten out of hand, and it's probably a lot to do.
Yep, and it's definitely the exception, I mean, it's, uh, there's not many like that.
No, but that does bring up the point, Brian, that we have, several years ago, it hasn't been that long, several years ago, we started to address stormwater ditches on the island, and historically, the town did not enforce any kind of private maintenance of stormwater ditches, whether they were six inch shallow swales or Hennecker's ditch. And so, they're all over town, and I know we had some discussions years past about the ones over there on Saint Joseph's that crossed out to the harbor, and we didn't have an easement, we couldn't get to it, and that led us to creating a policy that said, if it's a ditch on private property, you're responsible for maintaining it, cause the town does not have easements. Um, this particular one, you, you know, I, I ran into one of the neighbors here at the, the land use planning meeting, and they shared with me their concern that this is an extraordinary sized ditch, and it's deeper, and it's wider, and I, I know that, uh, Ms. Fox had a concern that if we start maintaining one ditch, we set a precedent in what size ditch, and whose ditch, um, this is something that we need, I know the county, New Hanover County's been addressing this stormwater ditch issue for the last two or three years, as they move towards enforcing their policies, and we've heard, and the town has spent a lot of money in the past couple of years on fixing stormwater, and ditch, ditches are a big part of it. Um, we've got driveways where people have filled in a ditch, or they put the wrong size culvert in, and, and, um, Gil and Mark were, were holding people firm on the size of pipes, and those are on roadside ditches, then you have these transfer ditches, there's one over off of Goldsboro that just has never been maintained, so if we're starting to enforce that equitably throughout town, that's a good thing. Um, but we should develop some kind of policy that says, here it is, we don't have easements, um, the only reason we would need an easement is if we're gonna go maintain it, so obtaining that easement, does that, you know, defer, you know, state implicitly that we're gonna go do it, I'm just, this is a bigger issue, and Hennecker's ditch is a special ditch, and so, I don't know if we do something different on this than others, but it isn't as simple as just saying, hey buddy, go clean your ditch, because some of these, I mean, heck, the town hasn't spent the last ten years that I'm aware of, has never cleaned Hennecker's ditch, and we're spending ninety thousand dollars to clean part of it, so-
On the Montu property, Steve?
Yes, yes, yeah.
And, and Steve, that's kinda my point, we haven't cleaned ours either, so now, we're, you know, these homeowners, that, that Hennecker's ditch goes in their property, and I'm not talking about ditches in your backyard, or in that kinda stuff, or ditches in your driveway, I'm talking about actually part of Hennecker's ditch, which from what I saw, looked like it's about twelve foot deep-
Yes, ma'am.
And about five foot wide, you know, and then- and about five foot wide, you know, and then now we're saying, all right homeowner, you go clean it.
So I've been, sorry to cut you off, so I've been riding my bike in the past few weeks because the weather's been amazing. And with Steve, I would agree, because a lot of the neighborhoods, some of those that used to be ditches that you could tell were stormwater, have now just been completely covered up, and it's just slowly growing back. There's a few that actually have the pipes that are about two-thirds covered. So I'm glad you brought that up, because I've been noticing as well. I think it may be hard with enforcement thing, I guess, unless we put an ordinance in place. I think that if New Hanover County's looking to us, we should start in springtime, reiterating to all the residents, hey, do you understand the benefit of what your ditch is for, your trench or your swell, and why it's gonna help going into the rainy season? And maybe start giving that education on how to manage it and to take care of it properly. And then put something in place ordinance-wise that's, hey, you're responsible for your yard. And do you understand now your yard's gonna affect you, but it's gonna affect your neighbors, and it's gonna affect the community? So Steve, I've been seeing a lot lately, and I think we definitely need to, sorry, to address that. Whether it's Hennecker's ditch or ditch or-
Well, and there's probably three, roughly three types of ditches, and Hennecker's ditch is an anomaly because of the size and the amount of, and it used to bisect most of town, and it runs out to the river, and we use it at the lake. You have others that are what appear to be backyard ditches or not backyard ditches, they are stormwater conveyance, and they are running water from one point of town to another until they go underground. Those are equally as important if you want to prevent flooding in some of these areas.
And as we continue to let people build and we issue building permits, we lose impervious surface, so those become more important. So I don't, you know me, I'm the first one to say, write a ticket, find somebody. I'm not sure I want you to-
Education.
Right, I think we need to create some standards, and I'm not sure that we need to talk about, how do we get these ditches up to a certain level that they can be maintained?
Right, and to that end, I'm not sure on Hennecker's ditch if I would be opposed to bringing it to, having the town assist, getting it to a certain level, and then saying to the homeowner, you're in charge. Because we have not enforced it in the past. And that's, you know, when you start having to clean a ten-foot-deep, twelve-foot-wide ditch that handles that much stormwater, it's not the same as a two-foot, three-foot
Side yard.
Three-to-one slope that might have some, I mean, it's, so we have to be sensitive to the budget, but
Come on up, Mark.
we could bring it up to a level, and then say, from now on, it's on you, I might look at something like that.
I mean, I want to be fair to those people, I want to do what's fair. We haven't done our part to either, you know, in some areas, so. Yeah, but Mark, anything you gotta say, just come on up. I can't hear you down there, I'm sorry, I'm
That the owner grant us a temporary easement to bring it up to the standards that we would expect, and then maintenance by then would be much easier, but the ones that have gone too far, so that would be a good way for us to bring back what we expect.
We have not been enforcing this policy
That's fair.
for the last thirty years, so to jump on someone now and start talking about finding them and enforcing things-
Well, yeah, I think that's premature.
We need to work it back in, show what the standard is, and go from there.
I'd like to clarify, because like, you know, a lot of the ditches are in the right-of-way. I know we have changed the policy, so you maintain
Yes.
as far as cutting grass and stuff.
Yes, sir.
I don't know that we've gone to the extent that says you need to take care of your ditch.
No.
But we don't, we don't maintain those very well. So to be able to go into the private saying, hey, you haven't done that, when we haven't done that, it's not, because we've got standing water in a lot of the ditches in Wilmington Beach, it's been that way.
Yes, sir.
It doesn't flow. We need to do a better job of doing that, and I know that's a budgetary item as well, but it all goes to the same thing, and it's to keep the stormwater flowing where it's not flooding our properties. So I think we need to do, but how many ditches are we talking about that are actually on the private property and not on the right-of-way? Because most of the ones I know about are on the right-of-way.
Most are on the right-of-way. I mean, you have a small portion like this one, that is substantial.
That's an anomaly, that's a different kind of animal.
And then you've got different categories. I mean, you've got, you know, some that are big, which are very few of those, six-twelve and one.
Freeman property.
And then you've got these small little tributaries that are coming through, that maybe, you know, three or four properties coming together.
Tom, I bet you there's a dozen or twenty backyard ditches that were-
Well, a dozen is a lot, I mean, we've got six thousand residents, that's a lot of properties we're talking about, so that's something that's manageable, ten to twelve, that we might be able to get a temporary easement, take care of, bring it up to a standard. We'll probably have to change our ordinance so that we clarify what kind of maintenance is required and how often. But at the same time, we have to get our own house in order and make sure we're doing the stuff we're supposed to do in the right-of-way.
And we need to understand, that's a budget impact.
We've done some of that, but it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of stuff to keep doing that.
Typically, when do you guys, is there a schedule when you go through and start looking at ditches, trenches, everything of that nature?
It's really an ongoing thing, just stepping back into being responsible for stormwater at this point. We've talked about it, we've discussed that, and pipe infrastructure, trying to, you know, get a schedule that we can kind of go to, and similar fashion of the water too, you know, when they jet the sewer lines and they document all those, we need to get to that point, is what we need to do.
So in five years, you can cover everything, and in five years-
Still rotating.
The storm, I would think that the, once you do it right, it would last at least five years before it becomes a problem. Well, yeah, that puts more strain on those. Well, I know, we did some on ocean, and it was doing great, but the last rain, it was backing up again, you know, it doesn't take much. I know you are.
So, so my question is this, the homeowner told me that, that you, I guess maybe you got a quote for him, it was nineteen hundred dollars
Yes, ma'am.
to bring that up. So we're not talking about chump change for a property owner, I mean, two thousand dollars is a lot of money to bring that ditch up standard. And I'm not talking about just that one, but how many around town, is it Steve's number, ten or twelve, that you think are comparable to that?
No, to that level, no, I don't think it's that. No.
There's a dozen or a couple dozen that are, I'm thinking of one like on the back of Goldsboro or over on Saint Joseph Street, that Mr. Freeman's
Got you.
property, those kinds, you know, that are three to five-foot
That marsh rail.
swales that have a three-to-one slope that have some trees and grass that-
And that's a neighborhood, right? The way you're talking about.
It hugs along it. Because they're hitting hills, hitting hills.
We have started, especially since the last storm, and all the development we've had in Carolina Beach, developing a master stormwater plan. We've been talking about a master stormwater plan, right? So, and I think that needs to be part of it, and however, I'm asking you guys that talk with Lucky, and you guys get together on what can bring up these ditches to the standard they need to be, and then create some rules or whatever codes for our homeowners to go by to continue that maintenance.
Sure, okay.
But I don't know that putting it all on the homeowner right now is fair.
So to make sure I'm understanding this right, you guys want us to come back? Because I know we'll need to go through Noel, as far as any type of easement, even if it's the very nature to, as we move forward, to remove the town from responsibility of that.
And I don't want to see it take five years. I think, I think in five years, we'll have all new problems, so it's something we need to get on as fast as possible.
I think a temporary easement's a a good strategy, because that means your opportunity for being responsible for it is limited. As soon as the easement ends, then you're back to the, it's private property, we don't mess with it.
Yes, sir. Yeah, the door needs to shut.
If you get a permanent easement, then you're opening yourself up to doing it every time there's a problem, and that's-
So Noel cautioned against temporary easements, five points, that's one. On that property, six-twelve Charlotte, I went and saw it, I know a number of us did. A tree was topped. The top of the tree came down, that's obviously not storm-related, it's clear cut.
That's correct.
To my point earlier, non-arbitrary in terms of what a standard free-flow of water looks like, I think everybody here has made that point. Point four, you were at the Joint Land Use Advisory Committee meeting yesterday, Lucky, and you met some of our friends across the river. As we move towards a long-term lease agreement, good faith on our part is our commitment to maintain Hennecker's ditch on their property. We do that, more favorable light for some of the things that we're pursuing in relation to our leased property. And then finally, it's been said here earlier, down here, there are impacts to adjacent properties, particularly on Cape Fear as it relates to that blockage, and that's all I have.
Jeremy, for the Land Use Plan Steering Committee, is this something we can think about as regards to being preemptive for future growth? That we need to bring up there?
Certainly, yeah, there's some policies that need to be in place.
Not even just policies, but if you can look at the map and say, hey, if we're thinking building here, these are the things that we know that we need to structure and team up with these guys, because that's something that we may want to present to the steering committee as well as the public whenever they come in for that next open house.
Yeah, definitely we can discuss that.
The next open house, I don't think they've dated yet, but the next year meeting
Will we get a date?
in March. It's possible in May.
And just one last comment, you two know
Thanks, Steve.
more than any of us where your top priorities are when it comes to those, cleaning out those storms. Maybe you can make a list, or tier it, you know, a certain way, these are our high priority, medium priority, lower priority, and get started, because we're not, we might not be thinking about it now, but we will in our next rain event, or we will in our next hurricane, and it'll be the same issue we have now, so. We kind of seem to forget about it a little bit, and then it comes back, so it's always gonna come back. And we know that probably means more money.
Not probably, definitely.
That's good. We got to say it first, anything else on that non-agenda item?
That one specifically, no.
Do you have non-agenda items?
I do.
Sure you do, yeah.
Lucky, welcome. Got your hands full. Welcome, I'm excited to have you here, I think we can do a lot of great things together. My very first one is, once you start to get acclimated within the next month, please go back to the retreat, audio, video, notes, whatever it is of that nature, and look at all the small takeaways that council spoke of, because I don't have that note on me specifically, but we threw out a whole bunch of fun, random things I know we'd spoke about, that I'd love to see addressed during these next five months, or six months. A few specifically that I jotted down while we were talking is timekeeping and payroll, we need to find a way to automate that. Same with water bills and all of our payables, because there's a lot of paperwork that's just being everywhere, so those are two of the main things I remember during that timeframe. As well as possibly, when is our IT contract up? And what's the cost-benefit analysis of just hiring an IT guy in-house? Steve, that was actually, one of my takeaways is the ditch thing, I'm glad you brought that up, thank you. And then the supply manager thing. I didn't have too much with our non-agenda items, I think one of the things that one of them is, what I'd like to see is, next month in March, we're having a full committee meeting where everyone's coming together, we kind of talk about Robert's rules and things of that nature. I would love if every chairman at that meeting could just, quick overview of their committee, how things are going, what are some of their concerns, I think now's that time that we're gonna have that many people here that we should address that. I also think that we as council, and I think we kind of failed this in January, and as well as at the beginning of this month, is that I've been in this position one year, I think that sometimes, every year, we should just, at that meeting, remind our residents the amount of things that we handled last year. Because last year was huge, we handled like
I'm gonna start making a list.
And the thing is, is that, you know, at the town, me and Joe did a town hall, and during that timeframe, I just kind of jotted down a handful of things that we did last year. And as I rattle them off, it's, town hall, you got eight people there attending, maybe thirty, but at least in this venue, you get more people watching and listening, understanding. We had the most rain we've had historically in this small community. We had a huge storm that luckily did not devastate us. We had an awesome operations team that bounced us back extremely quick, we were one of the fastest communities to bounce back. We lost the town manager, we now have a new town manager. We went through a really good budget season, you had two new council members, mayor and councilperson came on board. There were a ton of things that we did very well last year. Yes, we didn't move forward on that lake yet, but if you look each month, the things that we progress on as a community, as council, and just as staff for our town, we did a lot of amazing things. Off the top of my head, I can't remember where those notes were, but I think that every January or February's meetings, we should take time to remind our residents, like, yeah, hey, yeah, there's a couple of things that we know that we're not doing well, but we're working on those. But at the same time, there's probably eighty percent of things that we're doing amazingly well, that just aren't getting that recognition. You know, look at Boardwalk, look at our community, the things we're doing with the stormwater, it's the infrastructure, there's so many things that we're doing that are awesome, that I think sometimes we get caught up in the, oh, they're not doing this, they're not doing that, but there might be things that you don't see that we are doing. I think as a council, we need to reiterate that to our communities, so that way they see that we care as much as they do, we know our staff is working really hard, and we need to make sure we're conveying to them. Except for, you know, when you're in the grocery store, or on Facebook, anything of that nature, just, hey, guys, we're gonna do a quick recap, here's what's going on, because I bring up education so much, because communicating things the right way to people sometimes helps to just resolve a lot of issues. And I think that's something we need to put in once a year, or maybe even twice a year, you know, beginning of the year, halfway through, just to kind of say, hey, we do care about you guys, we are working, and kind of go about it from there. That was my number, my main thing, the other ones, every, just welcome to the team, look into those, looking forward to doing one-on-one with you. Like council as a whole, I think overall, we're doing well, I know in the past year, we've butted heads on a few things, but overall, I think that we all have that same vision. And it's how to continue to progress our community as it does grow, because it's going to grow, and to make sure that we take care of one another as well as our visitors and business owners. And that's all I have.
Yeah, I don't think the rose, the bloom is off the rose yet.
Are you saying it's more than two meetings a month?
Oh, man, council, you go to like seven meetings a month, they misled me.
That's an inside joke, they were told it was only two meetings a month. I said, just come on over.
But, you know, also in fairness, I think that, oh, actually, now that I'm thinking about it, I do have a few other things, and I know. So number one is, I'm surprised I didn't write this down, code enforcer. It probably sucks to hear this from me, but I think that the hours of operation should change, it should be ten to six or ten to seven. Because if contractors get up until six o'clock to work, and our enforcer is leaving at five, that leaves an hour of them saying, hey, yes, sir. What does that mean on call? So typically on a daily basis, people just cruising around?
So we have to educate the citizens then on who to call, you know, because they do not like calling nine-one-one.
Which type, yeah, which, yeah, so that, this tied into my other thing that me and Leanne were talking about. Average resident doesn't know about the non-emergency number. Who does that route to, what's going on? I know we prefer to call nine-one-one because there's, it's a call, it's logged, you have information. However, our community is so together on so many things that typically, they don't want to call nine-one-one because there's a contractor working over here, because to them, that's not worth that call. They also don't know about that phone number to call, or who it's gonna route to. I think if we could find a way to that phone number route to whoever the officer is on duty or the on-call guy, they could still jot that down, take it as a call, and it's easier to call and say, man, I know I'm probably gonna talk to Mark, and hey, Mark, that dude's over there doing that thing again, versus having to go through nine-one-one. There's gotta be something we could put into play for that. And not even just for the enforcer, but for cops as well. Because after five o'clock, we typically say, hey, call nine-one-one if it's non-emergency, call this, and most people don't know that number. My second thing is that huge guy on Facebook, I love it, I think it's a great way that we can communicate with people in general, in our community. Facebook? Our Facebook sucks. All it is, is download of information. There's no engagement, there's no anything, it's just, it truly is a horrible Facebook page in my own eyes. That's just my own vision out of five. You go to, I think, just my opinion, I think we need to change our name from Town of Carolina Beach Common Government to just Town of Carolina Beach. You go look at Wilmington's Facebook page, super informative, very engaging, you just want to go to it every day, because you're like, wow, this is a really fun, engaging page. They're always out in the community showing videos, talking about the budgets, like, go to their page, I challenge any of you, just look at it for a few minutes, and you're gonna say, wow, we need to restructure ours, because ours literally is just nothing but copy paste, here's what's going on, copy paste, here's what's going on. There's nothing in the community that says, hey, we got this awesome building that's coming up, and here's what we're trying to redo with our bathrooms. We have this, what's going on, hey, look, here's- Hey, look at, here's our guys from stormwater, look, they're working their ass off. It's, there's so much things that, that Facebook page that people could be going today to get their information, but they tell us that they don't. Why? Why do I go, there's nothing on that page that's engaging. Uh, which is the same with the website. I know we're supposed to be due for a remake on the website next month. Uh, the website sucks.
It's better than it's ever been.
It, it, well, yeah, it's a lot better than it was, yeah, a few years ago, but you have to go through so many thing clicks to get to something that we're in a timeframe where people's time, they don't wanna do that. I'm not gonna click this to click that, to click that to get here. We need to find a way to streamline those things and make it a lot, a lot better. As well as using the front homepage. There should be something in the middle of that page that instantly, whatever's going on today or tomorrow, it's boom, it pops right at you. I shouldn't have to go hit hot topics to find out, cool, my road's gonna be closed or the box that pops up or whatever's going on. They should have just have something boom right there. Uh, I said this last year, I'm gonna say it again this year. I think that's now is the time that we start preparing our community for summer visitors and for what to prepare for the next storm season. This storm season was crazy, hundred inches of rain. Uh, we had a hurricane. There's so many things that our police Facebook page, our fire Facebook page, our Facebook page that could've been doing videos that could've been talking about, hey, do you have a ditching yard? Do you know how to maintain that? So that way it helps with flooding. This is the time that we can be preemptive going into our spring, our summer and what's gonna happen. Using those pages and just taking a few minutes to do a quick tutorial on a video, goes a lot longer of a way than somebody complaining afterwards. Why wasn't I told this? Why wasn't I given this information? Specifically with the, the, uh, the passes to get back on the island last year. Everybody remembers that, those three days were hell. It was a three hour line for everybody to get a pass to get back on the island versus, as soon as we saw, we say, oh, cool, quick, here's that new link to that video we talked about earlier in the year, get in here now or streamline it, get online and get in, get that sticker printed out or, or a code on your phone or something. It's, now's that time. And the thing is, is that I know we get so busy and tied up into things, but we need to come up with videos that we make, they're just logged and saved somewhere. So that way, it's one of those things that says, hey, we're working on a stormwater, you know, stormwater is cool, let's pull up this educational video, slap it right up on Facebook and on the homepage of our website. Those are the things our residents are really looking for because they're truly engaged. You go on our Facebook page now and you find me three informational videos that talk about any of those things and you won't. And almost, and even with the face, uh, the fire department and the police. Uh, and, and I talk about this all the time, I'm sorry for taking up so much time, but it's that important. Uh, and that might be it. Good, I'll tie in after you, it's other humor.
I don't have anything.
I don't have that at all. Uh, no, I really don't have much except for welcome and I would encourage us. We've talked about maybe having some, um, stakeholder meetings for you Lucky where you have an opportunity to meet with different segments of the community, one-on-one to hear what their specific concerns would be, whether that's, you know, small business owners or the PTO or Builders Developer Group or the, um, uh, Homeowners Association. We have just a couple of larger homeowners associations that might have different. And I think if you have an opportunity over the next couple of months to meet with those groups one-on-one and hear from them what's driving their concerns in the community, that would benefit you and it would ultimately then benefit us. Um, as I look, we're coming up on March first, that gives us about sixty days or less before we really start seeing traffic show up on the, on the island. So we have a lot to, to, to get cracking on and I'm, I'm, we're moving on March, so I'd like to kinda hear soon where we're at on a budget process. And I know that's a lot to, to, you know, we have those dates scheduled and everything, but we probably oughta be getting some work product out at some point. I'm sure Ed's got plenty for you. But welcome aboard and, uh, we're excited to have you here. Excited about the community and, um, we'll just keep moving forward. And that's all I had.
And just a quick update, we did, um, attend the, um, town and state dinner, um, last week in Raleigh. Um, that was, uh, a success. We met with our representatives, we met a lot of people from other communities. Um, we, Joe Dan and I actually, um, met some people from Winterville who were looking to build an Island Greenway. So we invited them to our ribbon cutting to see how we have done it. And so a lot of communities looking at what Carolina Beach is doing, so we were excited about that. And, um, again, glad to have you. We know you're busy, so please use us any way you, you need for information and glad to have you.
I'll be brief. Governor's Resiliency pro- uh, program, I'm gonna be looking into that. It's just some research for myself. I mentioned that to Ed, I'll share that with you Lucky, obviously. In relation to some, uh, green infrastructure ideas that he and I got received from Julie Damron yesterday. Two, I got a question from a resident on gazebo repair, projected gazebo repair at Starfish and Canal. Three, the town does not supervise the beach renovation. I've probably answered that question face-to-face over the phone, text, face, you know. So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna put that out again as often as I can. The Corps of Engineers does that, establishes everything, as Steve and everybody here well knows. Four, weekly updates are great. Ed does that, he recaps the key issues. He does it in an executive summary, which you're very familiar with, capturing the RFIs from council. Um, you'll incorporate that into your own battle rhythm. Five, um, Mark and Brian, we have lunch next Wednesday, the sixth, to do the one-on-ones that we haven't had a chance to do. Jeremy, if you can break away twelve at hang ten. And, um, thank you, welcome. Anything else, Tom?
Yeah, um, the state dinner, we, before the state dinner, we had some, uh, training, I guess informational workshops.
Yeah.
Um, one was on having broadband, um, access to every, all the citizens. And certainly, the one thing I didn't understand was that, that, uh, there turn, the standard is, I think fifty down and three up?
Twenty-five down, yeah.
Twenty-five down, okay, good. Uh, and the standard they're trying to meet is a hundred for both. Um, and so that was very interesting here because we don't have that.
But not the, not municipalities, but that company.
That company was doing that right. That was their standard, but, uh, I do know a, a company now that's adding fiber optics to the, uh, town and that standard of a hundred down and a hundred up is what they're looking at them, um, so that's good. Also affordable, uh, housing was a big topic. That's at the state level, the, we know the county is, that's one of their goals for the year and I think that's something we may need to look at as well. Um, and how we can contribute to the affordable housing for our citizens as well. Also, they talked, uh, they had, I can't, the third thing that they had, I can't remember, but they had a, um, Pay It is an app that a lot of municipalities are using, the DMV has started using that and that helps the, uh, helps you to be able to access all the things you need to do as far as paying things, uh, through our website. So that's something you might wanna investigate. That's it.
We're pretty good on the broadband, that was more rural areas out west.
Well, it was, but I don't have that standard, I wish I did, so.
It's a little offsetting that information. It's a community that their mean average isn't even thirty-five thousand.
Yeah.
And yet they put this huge infrastructure in for broadband and what they said their average price was, was about one fifty and, or seventy-five for people who couldn't meet the others. And the average house there was like two fifty. So how's anybody even surviving out there? It's, it was actually, it blew my mind away.
Well, I had the price on-
Wilks, Wilks County.
Forty, so that's, that's a better price.
Uh, oh, last thing, Brian, grass on the greenway, you said they sent out the sample to determine what we were gonna do, any thoughts or word on that? I think I'm done with my non-agenda.
Sure.
Get used to this.
All right, with, with that, I make a motion to, uh, adjourn all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Have an awesome day, everybody.
Yes, good day.